I'd like to call the Monday, August 21, 2017 Oakwood City Council Meeting to order. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Duncan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Mrs. Hilton?
Here.
Mr. Epley?
Here. And do I have a report on the minutes of our July 17 regular and work session? Mrs. Hilton?
Yes, Your Honor, I have reviewed the minutes from both of those meetings. I've found them to be correct and complete, and therefore I move that they be adopted as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
May all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you, so ordered. Under Status Reports, we have a new water and sewer line maintenance foreman, and our city manager would like to introduce him.
It's always an honor to introduce new employees. You remember, two months ago, we recognized Mike Winklevitz after a distinguished career here. Mike retired over thirty years, and during that entire time, he was our water and sewer line maintenance foreman, and then became the Assistant Public Works Director. And Mike's either down in Tennessee now in retirement, or will be moving down there shortly. But, you know, we had some very big shoes to fill, and I think we found just a top-shelf replacement for Mike. So let me just take a minute and introduce Chris. But before I do that, let me just share that within the Public Works Department, we have five key management folks. We have Kenneth Perkins, who runs all of our refuse programs: recycling, regular household trash pickup, the dumpster containers, special pickups, everything related to our refuse programs. We have Gary Dersch, who we speak about from time to time. Gary is our Ohio EPA licensed water operator, so he takes care of our eight water production wells, our three water treatment plants, our water tower, everything related to developing our public water system and providing the water. Tom Long is in charge of our engineering as our engineering technician, and our traffic signals, our street signs, tree trimming, all that sort of stuff for the Public Works Department. And Dave Shuey is in charge of our right-of-ways, sidewalks, roadways, and importantly, the storm sewer system, so all the catch basin inlets and all that underground storm sewer. And that leaves the water distribution system and the sanitary sewer collection systems, a bunch of underground stuff, but very, very important stuff for our community. In a small community, 2.2 square miles, you know, we have over 3,800 housing units. Every one of them have a water line going to them, and everyone has a sanitary sewer line going to it. And those have to work 24/7. And when they don't, when there's issues, the key person is our water and sewer line foreman, who is now Chris Harrell. So Chris comes to us with eleven years of experience in the industry, and most recently from Montgomery County Environmental Services. And he holds Ohio EPA licenses, a Class II in water supply, a Class II in water distribution, a Class II in wastewater collection, and the backflow device recertification certification. And again, he's responsible for the day-to-day operation of our water distribution system and the sanitary sewer collection system, and for both of those, in terms of the EPA, he's our operator of record. So it's a very important position, and we're very glad to have him. And I'll invite him to say a word about himself.
Welcome, Chris.
Thank you, thank you, Council. Again, just like you said, those are the licenses I hold. It's what I'll be taking care of around here and anything in between that's needed from time to time. But I just wanted to thank Mr. Klopch, Mr. Weiss-Kircher, for the opportunity for this position. I've noticed since being here with the city, that smaller hometown family feel, and they've done nothing but promote that and help me along my path. So, thank you.
Great. Any comments or questions for Chris?
Welcome aboard.
Welcome to Oakwood, and we look forward to working with you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, great. Thank you for coming tonight.
All right.
Next, under Status Reports, I have a proclamation naming Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, whereas prostate cancer constitutes nineteen percent of all cancer diagnoses and eight percent of all cancer deaths, and whereas in Ohio, an estimated 5,840 new cases of prostate cancer and an estimated 1,020 deaths will occur. And whereas men with relatives, father, brother, son, with a history of prostate cancer are twice as likely to develop the disease, whereas veterans are 1.5 times more likely to get prostate cancer. And whereas prostate cancer is the most commonly diagnosed form of cancer in American men and the third-leading cause of cancer-related deaths. And whereas this year approximately 161,000 men will be diagnosed with prostate cancer in the United States alone, one man every 3.3 minutes, and roughly 27,000 will die this year from the disease, one man every 20 minutes. Whereas one in eight men are diagnosed with prostate cancer, African-American men are at the highest risk for the disease, with a rate of one in six men. And African-American men are 2.3 times more likely to die from the disease. Whereas education regarding prostate cancer and early detection strategies is critical to saving lives and preserving and protecting families. And whereas all men are at risk for prostate cancer, we encourage the citizens of Oakwood to recognize the importance of prostate screenings. Now therefore, under the power vested in me, I, William D. Duncan, Mayor of the City of Oakwood, hereby proclaim September 2017 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in Oakwood. Thank you very much. And we have a special visitor here tonight. We have Helen Jones Kelly here to talk about the Human Services Levy Campaign, and I believe you have a presentation to give to Council?
I do. Thank you so much, Mayor Duncan.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you both to the mayor and to all of you on Council, as well as to your staff team. And I really appreciate the chance to come before you tonight. And I'm just gonna take one quick little moment of executive privilege, because we have a speakers bureau that gets asked, who would like to go out to certain communities to speak? And when I heard that we had the opening to come to Oakwood, I jumped on it, because it gave me a chance to say thank you. My daughter and granddaughters are residents of Oakwood.
Oh, really? Great.
And last week, when Smith started, there I had my first great-granddaughter, starting her next year of school.
Now, wait a minute. You have a granddaughter?
I have nine grandchildren.
Oh, my gosh.
And so it was my chance to say thank you, and just to really appreciate the fact that this community does so much for its citizens. You have a great deal of resources and a wonderful supportive network. And in the years that my family has lived here, my extended family, we do appreciate the way in which you care for each other. Thank you for that. Now, I have to go back on script, but the reality is, because you are able to do so much, then you understand why the Human Services Levy is so important. Today was a big day. I heard someone mention coming in needing glasses because of, you know, looking at the sun today, having had the eclipse. There was someone who did one of the post-event interviews today, who talked about the fact that it was an awesome experience, but it also helped to reinforce our place in the cosmos. And I thought about that as I was getting ready to come here this evening, because that really spoke to me and resonated in terms of the Human Services Levy, our place in the cosmos when it comes to caring for those who are the least among us. And in the way that our society and our environment have changed over time, it's no longer the least among us who benefit from our Human Services Levy. So I have a real quick slideshow and some quick comments to make, and certainly want to answer any questions that you may have as we're talking this evening.
Great.
We're gonna see how well I paid attention when you showed me what to do here today. Okay. First of all, in the very first piece of news, which is really probably the best news that I can bring you this evening, is that as we talk about the Human Services Levy in Montgomery County, one thing you know is that it's unique. There are a number of other communities that say they have a Human Services Levy, but it is not a fully combined levy in the way that we provide ours. Ours is truly collaborative, and we don't come to business community or to our civic organizations or elected officials on a regular basis asking for help for various siloed services or agencies. We come every four years, because we have this combined levy, which has gotten us past turf and some of the things that other communities continue to grapple with. This time, as we come to you, we're asking for a renewal levy. We're not going to ask for any increase in tax base with this levy. This levy was voted in in 2014? No, this was 2010, excuse me. There's a levy A and a levy B. Our one levy is divided into two. In 2010, the voters passed this levy at a seventy percent passage rate at a capped amount, and all we're asking to do is continue the same tax rate that we were approved for in 2010. So that's an important piece to know about this one. The other thing that's important to know is that this work on behalf of this levy goes across our entire community. It supports these primary agencies: human services through Children's Services, through the Public Health Department, which I know you all have a separate Public Health, which is supported in a separate funding from the Human Services Levy, which allows you to be able to manage your own system here in the community, which is very important. It supports developmental disabilities. It supports the alcohol, drug addiction, and mental health services system, which I'm responsible for. And it helps with senior services throughout our entire community. So it goes across the entire county. There is not a citizen in this community who is not touched in some way by this levy, and I'm gonna show you that in just a couple of minutes here. With respect to Children's Services, we know that currently, especially with our epidemic around opioids, we have a lot of children who are being touched right now, families in need, children who are either coming into care or in need of increased supervision from Montgomery County Children's Services. And this levy supports that. It protects our children from abuse and neglect. It supports families. It allows families to remain together if at all possible, as long as the children can be protected. And we have a real good system here, which has been nationally recognized for being able to work with families and to maintain families as intact units as a result of the Human Services Levy. We have a lot of youngsters in our community with developmental disabilities, and the levy provides for services for those families who need those special types of supports in order to allow their children to be stable in community, and in some cases, to be able to go on as adults into independent living opportunities. And I'm gonna show you a slide for that as well. We have a number of elderly citizens who are supported by the Human Services Levy. We have citizens in this community who need meals, who need guardianship assistance. We have citizens who get friendly visitors who get them out and help them avoid being so isolated that they begin to lose contact with their ability to remain stable and sustained in their own home. So that's an important part of the Human Services Levy as well. As is, as you know, our system right now with alcohol, mental health, and other drugs. Being able to provide diagnosis, treatment, and recovery services for citizens in our community is an important part of our Human Services Levy work. This is especially critical right now, because unfortunately, we've reached a point in our society where everyone knows someone who is grappling with either some form of a mental challenge, brain illness as we look at it, or someone who is victimized in some way by addiction challenges, whether it's the person who is grappling with the addiction or a loved one, because it touches everybody in the family and everybody in their system. So this is an important part, again, of our funding through our Human Services Levy. We fund about forty agencies which provide services throughout the community, and those are critical services right now. In addition, we have a lot of folks in our community who are underemployed or who are unemployed but need the training and the support to be able to become sustaining, tax-paying members of our community. And the levy provides those kinds of workforce services, working with our business community and providing business solutions so that people can be employed and can be sustained in their employment, because they get additional training in soft skills. Many of us know we have to have a Plan B. The car may not start one day, and we have to have a Plan B. And sometimes when people have not worked before, have not had to be self-sustaining, there are basic things that they have not planned for as part of the employment process, and they end up losing entry-level jobs. So this allows them to learn the skills that are necessary: childcare, transportation, dependability, and those things that allow people to become contributing members of our society, in addition to being able to move into careers as opposed to just jobs. And then we have the adults I mentioned. We have adults in our disability system who are able to be touched in a way that allows them to receive training and support that make it possible for them to live on their own and to become, again, contributing, sustaining members of our community. When I say that everyone is touched, even if there was not anything in those pieces of slides that you could relate to automatically, I can tell you this, you can relate through restaurant inspections, and that's something that the levy provides for you. When you sit down to a meal in our community, you can be assured that it has successfully passed a restaurant inspection. And if not, it's not going to be a place that you're gonna be sitting down and eating, because someone is going to be paying attention to that and putting them on a special plan. We also are able to assure that our citizens across Montgomery County have high-quality air, and not just in the community itself, but in our businesses. So everyone, in some way in our community, is touched by the Human Services Levy. It works for all of us. Immunizations for children, my grandchildren, I'm glad that they can receive immunizations, because my daughter has the ability to provide for them, but there's some children who don't. They're all in school together, and they all come home with infections. So this allows us to be able to ensure that our youngsters are receiving the necessary immunizations so that they can be healthy and sustained in home. Our Human Services are efficient and accountable in that we have a citizens panel that actually oversees all of the services. They oversee all of the agencies. I showed you the five primary agencies. We have a citizens panel made up of business leaders and community leaders who meet regularly, who really immerse themselves in our organizations. Your former mayor, Judy Cook, is on my board. She's one of my bosses. And they really get to know our systems. They provide feedback, they provide hard questions, and they ensure that we are being accountable with the dollars, that we are being entrusted by the citizens of our community. This is just a collage of the types of folks who are served through the levy, and I think we can all relate to faces here. It's our community. It's the way in which we build in the kinds of supports for others who may not have them, and the way that Oakwood's able to provide it for its citizens because of the resources that are available. All of our citizens should have access to certain services and resources, and we're fortunate in this community, because for the last thirty-four years, we've been able to do this for them, because we have a Human Services Levy in place that stretches across all of the silos, across all of our systems. So I'm gonna say again, it won't raise taxes. It keeps everyone's taxes at the same level as was approved in 2010. It doesn't pick up any additional millage. It is just a renewal levy that we are bringing forward this year on the November ballot. And these are critical services, so we would ask you respectfully to keep these services intact and in place across our community. I brought an endorsement form. I'm not going to stick it in your face, but Lori has it, and it'll give you a chance to have a conversation at some point to determine if you would be willing to endorse the levy publicly and be part of the team that says yes to our Human Services Levy. That's my brief spiel. I'm available for any questions that you may have about any aspect of Human Services in the community.
Well, thank you, Helen. Does anyone have questions for Helen?
I have one.
Go ahead.
So I'm gonna make an assumption that, you know, there's a large pot of money that comes from this and your operating budget, you know, so on and so forth. Our budgets are run, and there's certain dollar amounts that are allocated for all, I believe there was five main areas. Has there been discussions at all, because of the opioid crisis, that possibly money might get moved around and you might focus a little more? I mean, I hate to take away from any other aspect, but because that crisis is so bad, possibly putting some more funds towards that area to try to help the sheriff and our policing and different things? And I'm not saying you get involved in police work, but just the whole aspect of the opioid crisis, has that been discussed at all at your level?
Absolutely. And in fact, that's an excellent question, because one of the things that we've done for years with this levy is because we've gotten past the turf issues, there are times when we've had, and certainly this has been the worst epidemic we've faced, but we've had other epidemics that have come around, and we come together as a team and talk about the fact that one system may need more funding this time. And one of us will say, I'll hold back on asking for anything else. We'll just make it work, because they need more money over there. And that actually happened this year with the opioid epidemic. The ADAMAS system is putting about $2.5 million into supportive services for the jail and for the court system, because we needed some additional resources available there. So we were able to go back, get additional dollars, and provide those, and that now is part of the allocation process as we continue to look at the opioid epidemic. We have not hit bottom yet, to be honest, and we know that we're going to have to continue to put additional dollars there. The nice thing, again, about our levy is that it allows us to leverage dollars. We're able to use it to bring in more federal and state dollars. We have to use local funds to be able to draw down additional dollars. So we've been able to bring additional dollars into our mental health and addiction system with our levy funds as a result of the collaboration that has occurred. So absolutely, yes.
Great, thank you. Other questions for Helen?
Yeah, I really appreciate you coming here. I know, you know, last month, we had Sheriff Plummer here talking about the opioid epidemic, but part of the issue was there are now so many more children involved with Children and Family Services, because now the parents are addicted and we're trying to protect these kids. And I know they're struggling a lot, but the fact that we do have flexibility in having these funds go to the area of greatest need is a nice thing that Montgomery County did, you know, twenty years ago. And I also just want to point out that historically, the City of Oakwood has always had the highest pass rate for these levies-
Yes, you have.
...of any jurisdiction in the county. If anyone, and so this is on the November ballot, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And if anyone wants to support this, are you going, are you having a soft sell because it's a renewal? Are you going to have signs? Or are you going to send literature to people? Or is that to be determined?
We will have literature distribution as well as signs out, and certainly, we know you all have been very helpful too in displaying signs and a great deal of support for this effort.
So if someone wants a sign, how do they get a sign?
Thank you for asking that. MontgomeryHumanServices.com will get them onto our website, which will allow them to sign up to volunteer and to receive any of the literature and other symbols of this campaign that they would like to have.
Great, great.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
You did a very good job last time. You know, Madeline Isley was here, and you know, she's a tough act to follow, but you did an outstanding job.
Thanks so much. I'll let her know that.
Okay, very, very good. Thank you very much for coming. I don't think we have any more visitors, unless, Brian, would you like to address Council? All right. And so with that, we'll, and we have no legislation this evening, and so we'll go straight to a staff report by our law director, Rob Jacks. Welcome, Rob. You're gonna come down front and address us?
Hi.
Okay. We'll see if you can operate the PowerPoint as good as Kelly.
Give me just a second with the-
Okay, no problem.
Members of Council, City Manager Klopch, Vice Kircher, Carol Collins, our audience at home and here in the council chambers, I'm here to talk about trees in Oakwood, which is not something you probably expected to have your law director stand in front of you and talk about, but it's an important topic here in the City of Oakwood. As you know, we have a very dense residential population. We have over 3,000 homes in a little over two and a half square miles. People from outside of Oakwood often say that we all live on top of each other, particularly on the east side of Far Hills, some on the west, but we have homes that are in close proximity to one another, and we have a lot of mature trees, older communities that have been here a while. And with all those trees comes a lot of questions, and we get these questions here on a very regular basis here at City Hall. I probably take two or three calls a week. Jay, I know you field quite a few of them, and Ethan Kroger, who's our code enforcement officer, gets a lot of these calls. We'll have residents that call in, and they wanna know, they have a problem with a tree. They have maybe a neighbor that has a tree that's growing up and over the privacy fence, and it's touching their garage, and they wanna know what to do about it. Or they have a tree that's on the boundary line of a couple of properties, and they're not sure who owns it, and they're trying to figure out what to do. A lot of times, they wanna know what will the city do to fix this problem. So a lot of what we talk with them about is in the nature of education and trying to keep them informed. But, you know, a lot of times, it's just as simple as not understanding which trees are city-owned trees and public trees, and which trees are privately owned. And so that's kind of what I wanna talk to you about tonight. We're gonna go through a couple of different things. We're gonna talk about those things that are the city's responsibility and what we do here for our trees. And when I say "we," that's primarily through Carol's Department, the Department of Leisure Services, and the Public Works Department as well. We're gonna talk about the homeowner responsibilities, what our residents, including myself, what we have to do in terms of maintaining, taking care of our trees and our yards. I'll talk about a few common situations that come up involving trees. We'll talk about bushes and shrubs here in Oakwood, and then I'll let you know where people can go for further information on this. Important concept here is public trees versus privately owned trees. Some of these are easy questions, some of them are hard. Public trees, what are they? Those are the ones that are on city property. They're on the city grounds. They're out here in front of 30 Park Avenue. They're also on our boulevards, whether that's the ones down the middle of Far Hills or Triangle, 4 Boulevard. They're also the trees that you find in our city parks and natural areas. And you'll see that I've got an asterisk on this slide that does not include right-of-way areas adjacent to private property, what most people think of as the tree lawn or the park strip there in front of their home. That's kind of a special situation. We'll talk about that a little bit here. But generally speaking, public trees are the ones that are on city property, our parks, our boulevards. Privately owned trees, everything else. These are the trees in your yard, the shade trees you have in your backyard, the decorative landscaping trees in your front yard. These are on private property. They're in, they do also include the trees and the tree lawns and right-of-way. And I mentioned that that's sort of a special situation. City right-of-way, a lot of people think of the street as a right-of-way, but it actually extends to the, I guess, the inside of the curb, or the, coming from the street would be the far side of the sidewalk is where the right-of-way extends to. That means that the city owns that property there. You, as a homeowner, have a right of use and also to maintain it, which we'll talk about later. The things that you plant there in the tree lawn belong to you, but you're planting them on city property, so you have some maintenance requirements that come along with that. The city will maintain all of our public trees, obviously. We spend a lot of time, a lot of effort, and a lot of money doing that. We also engage in code enforcement, and that takes its form in three general areas. A key one is property maintenance. We have a property maintenance code that requires people to take care of their properties in a general sense, but we do inspections. We take a look at things. When you've got dead trees on your property, we'll let you know it, if we can see it. We'll let you know that that needs to come down or that it's a health hazard. If you've got trees that are growing into the shingles on your garage roof, let's say, and tearing up those shingles, causing a problem, we'll let you know about that and that you need to maintain that. causing a problem, we'll let you know about that and that you need to maintain that. We also enforce what we call our General Offenses Code in the codified ordinances. That's where you'll find the requirements for some of the maintenance that I talked about, such as the obligation to maintain that park strip or tree lawn in front of your home. There's also some other requirements we'll talk about here in a little bit. And then I included state laws there. There are not a lot of state laws having to do with trees, but we'll talk about one in a little bit that has to do with what I call the reckless injury limitation on tree pruning, and that can be an important one. And finally, the city's responsible for street maintenance, and where that comes into play with trees, as you can imagine, sometimes in a storm, trees come down or limbs come down, they fall in the roadway. We have an obligation as a city to keep the road clear and safe for travel, so you'll see our crews out there maintaining trees to some extent in connection with that. What are the homeowner responsibilities? Obviously, they have to maintain trees on their own private property. The city generally does not get involved with privately owned trees unless there's a violation of the Property Maintenance Code or certain situations with the, involving the right-of-way trees. The city is not required to cite or remedy private tree-related nuisances, such as, you know, that tree that's growing over and encroaching in the neighbor's garage, something like that. Sometimes when we can see them, if it's a violation of the Property Maintenance Code, obviously, we would cite that. But we're not out looking for each and every little violation that may occur there, and the city's not obligated to do that. Talked about right-of-way trees being a special situation, and the homeowner is required to maintain the trees that grow in there. We have clearance requirements. Above sidewalks, tree limbs have to be trimmed eight feet above, giving eight feet of clearance on the sidewalks. And on the street side, they have to be taken up to 14 feet above the street. A lot of times, homeowners think that that's the city's responsibility. These are your trees, take care of them, you know, they don't wanna mess with it. That's actually a homeowner responsibility, and we do send code enforcement letters to people and let them know that they need to trim those up. Having said that, we do sometimes do some pruning, in particular where there's a long stretch and several trees that need to be taken care of, for pragmatic reasons as much as anything. Sometimes it's just easier to knock that out than to try to engage in several instances of enforcement. But the eight-foot and 14-foot clearance requirements are the homeowner's requirements. Similarly, they're required to keep their trees and their bushes and things trimmed away from regulatory signs. What do I mean by regulatory signs? Those are the posts that may be in your tree lawn that say "two-hour parking," or they say "no parking on this side of the street," or street signs, things like that. Any of those public signs, it's the homeowner's obligation to keep their trees cleared away from that. Common tree situations that come up. One of them is utility line clearance, and we get a lot of calls about this. It's primarily DPNL will be out there. You know, they've got power lines strung up in the easements behind homes, sometimes out in front in the right-of-way areas, and they'll be out there doing pruning and trimming. People say, "I don't want DPNL here trimming my trees." Well, a lot of times, those trees are growing in a utility easement. Most, about all of those power lines should be located within an easement, which is a legal document where DPNL's got the right to place lines there and to enter and exit to maintain those lines. If you're not sure whether there's a utility easement, those are recorded documents. They're kept with the Montgomery County Recorder's Office, and usually DPNL keeps a copy of those too, although not always. But they can be looked up, and certainly if a homeowner's in doubt, they can consult a private attorney. We have a fact sheet on the city website. I'll hold it up and show you, but from where you're sitting, it probably just looks like a white piece of paper with text on it. It's a utility tree trimming fact sheet that explains some, a little bit about the line clearance standards that they use, how they determine how much to cut, what they do with the cut material when it comes down, and what you can do as a homeowner if you have questions or concerns about DPNL coming on your property. But for purposes of my presentation tonight, I just wanna let people know that that's something that does commonly come up, and we've tried to make some information available regarding that. As far as determining ownership of trees, the easy questions are the ones where the tree is growing completely on your property. You know that's your tree 'cause it's in your yard, and that's generally determined by where the trunk is located. Occasionally, you'll have a trunk that straddles a property line that's on both sides, and that's a little bit different situation. But where the trunk is determines who owns the tree. It's not always that black and white, though, because it can, that can be varied by what I've called on the slide here, agreement or past practice. And what I mean by that is if a tree is growing in my neighbor's yard, but I've always maintained that tree, and my neighbor and I kind of understand that I'm the one that maintains that, legally, it may be considered my tree. That can happen. Not super common, but it can happen. When in doubt, as far as the location of a tree, a survey is gonna be the best way to determine that. Figure out exactly where your property lot lines are, and they can determine which side that's on. In the absence of a survey, work out an agreement with your neighbors as to who owns the tree. And that's gonna be a key that you'll hear a couple more times in this presentation, talk to your neighbors. I don't think people do that enough. What do you do when the tree overhangs the property line? We all have a common law right to trim in our property. What that means is, if my neighbor's tree is growing over into my property, I have the right to trim branches, roots, anything that's growing over on my side of the property. I can trim all the way up to the property line. However, you'll see that I've noted on there something called a reckless injury limitation. There's a state law that does prohibit people from recklessly injuring or damaging the tree of another. So, my neighbor's tree is growing over, I wanna prune it back, I can do that. But if I do so in a manner that endangers the health of the tree or kills the tree, I may be liable, both criminally and civilly. The statute provides for fourth-degree misdemeanor criminal prosecution. It also provides that the person who has recklessly injured the tree can be on the hook for what are called treble or triple damages. So, if you're gonna prune a tree that belongs to your neighbor, you gotta be careful about how you go about that. It's best to consult a certified arborist and have that work done in a proper manner. And it's also always, always a good idea to talk to your neighbor. What about when the tree straddles the property line? Under Ohio law, a tree that straddles the property owner is owned in common by all adjoining property owners. If that's two property owners, they each have a half interest in the tree. If that's three or four or five owners, then they each have a proportional shared interest in that tree. Again, that can be varied by an agreement among the neighbors or by past practice, but generally speaking, a tree that straddles the property line is owned in common by both neighbors. So, when it comes to pruning that tree, that same reckless injury limitation still applies. I can't just prune it willy-nilly and not care about whether it damages the tree. It's not even a defense for me to say, "Well, I'm the half-owner of that tree, and so if I kill it, so what?" It's half-owned by my neighbor, and I could have a problem if I do that. Got a bullet point up here about halved versus shared maintenance, and that's something that neighbors and property owners will wanna talk about with each other. Halved maintenance is what I mean when, these are basically just different approaches that neighbors may take to the maintenance of a shared tree. Halved would be, I'll take care of the tree on my side of the property line, you take care of the tree on your side of the property line, and we're good. That works very well for some people. Other situations, it may make more sense to do what's called shared maintenance, which is where you bring a tree care expert out there to evaluate the tree, have them do whatever needs to be done, and you share in the cost of that. Sometimes that can be more beneficial, because trees benefit often from symmetrical pruning and taking care of it on all sides, and having that done by one tree professional can obviously have some big benefits. Falling tree material is something that, it happens, whether it's through a storm, wind, car that crashes into a tree, something like that, it happens. The general rule is that that's what insurance companies like to call an act of God, and traditional legal negligence principles apply. In other words, if it falls in my yard, it's my responsibility to clean it up. It's not necessarily the responsibility of the person who owned that tree. That can be, that can be changed, though, if you put a neighbor on notice of a potentially dangerous situation. And this is something that I've suggested to people a number of times. If your neighbor has a branch that may be hanging over, and you think that branch is diseased or dying, hire your own tree expert, have them come out and evaluate it and issue an opinion on that. And if their opinion is that that tree branch is, in fact, a danger, communicate that to your neighbor. Always best to do it in writing, but communicate that to your neighbor and put them on notice of the dangerous situation. You may find that that goes a long way to getting them to resolve that situation. The last bullet point you'll see up there is city immunity, and that's something that a lot of people don't understand. But by statute in the state of Ohio, what's called the Political Subdivision Tort Liability Act, there is immunity on cities for falling tree material. When there's a tree that falls in the roadway, and it does happen sometimes, a branch may fall and hit a car or something like that, the city generally has liability immunity in a situation like that and is not responsible for the damage. We will, of course, get out there and promptly clean up any tree material that's on the ground and take care of making sure that the road is safe to travel, but we do have immunity for the liability. Bushes, shrubs, and other vegetation are handled in much the same way as trees here in Oakwood. Ownership is determined the same way. If it's growing on your property, it's your shrub, it's your tree. If it's on the property line, it's gonna be shared. What's important to note is that property owners are required to keep all their bushes and shrubs trimmed. They're required to keep it clear of the rights-of-way. Rights-of-way here include streets, sidewalks, alleys, curbs, driveway aprons, anything that's considered public right-of-way. You gotta keep your stuff trimmed and out of the way of that so that you don't impede movement there. And then I've also noted that homeowners are required to maintain the tree lawn. That means to keep it mowed, to keep it well-kept, and grass and weeds are not allowed to be more than eight inches high. We do have a fairly active program through our code enforcement officer of touring around, you know. Occasionally, you'll see a vacant home or something where the grass has gotten too long and they're not taking care of it. We put out door hangers and have an enforcement protocol that we follow to get that taken care of. And if the homeowner doesn't take care of it, the city ends up going out and mowing that property and billing and/or certifying that cost to the property tax bill. Finally, I wanna talk about disputes and concerns that come up. You'd be surprised at the number of times people call up here and they have a problem with a tree that they think belongs to their neighbor, and I ask them, "Well, what did your neighbor say when you talked to him about it?" And he says, "Well, I don't know. I haven't talked to him." Never fails. Talk to your neighbors. That's the easiest way to resolve a lot of these situations. You know, my grandmother used to say, "You catch more flies with honey than you do with vinegar." Be nice, be polite, be civil, be courteous. You know, we all live together, fairly close together. Talk to your neighbors, and a lot of this stuff can be worked out. But when and if it can't, it's important to remember that private boundary line disputes, property line disputes, tree disputes between neighbors, that is a private civil issue. It's generally not something that the city will wade into. It's something that you wanna consider mediation, maybe taking a case to a small claims court for determination as to who owns something or who's responsible for paying for something. And you can always consult a private attorney on that. If you need additional information on any of the stuff I've been talking about here tonight, I wanna bring your attention to a couple of things. First of all, I mentioned the utility line clearance fact sheet. This is available on the city's website. There's another fact sheet on the city's website called Trees in Oakwood that summarizes a lot of what I've just talked about in terms of who owns the tree, falling tree material, what will the city do, what do I have to do, all that. That's all detailed in here, and we've put this on the website as a sort of a go-to source that we can point people to when they call in here with questions and concerns about that. But that's a great resource. In addition to those two things, the city does employ a full-time horticulturist, Brian Caldwell. He works with the Leisure Services Department. Brian is incredibly helpful, incredibly knowledgeable. You can call him with questions or concerns that you have, and he'll do his best to answer them or get you the information that you need. I've included the code enforcement officer on here as well. He's generally involved in property maintenance situations and the lawn mowing notifications, but if a resident has questions about those kinds of situations, our code enforcement officer, Ethan Kroger, is the person to talk to about that. And then last but not least, you can always get information about these from a certified arborist, from a surveyor, or your own private attorney. Sometimes it's just best to consult the experts on these things, and those would be the people. With that, I've presented everything I came with tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Rob? So, if I have a tree between the sidewalk and the street, it's my tree?
Yes, sir.
I can chop it down if I want?
You don't have to have a city permit to cut it down. It's your tree.
I don't? Okay. Carol won't like that, though.
I would think she would tell you it's not recommended. If it's a healthy, if it's a healthy tree, she would much prefer that you keep it up.
Correct. And I've had personal experience with Brian, actually, my wife's had personal experience with Brian, and he's done an outstanding job. So, I would encourage people to talk to the horticulturist, 'cause I think he loves trees. He really loves trees, though. But that was very helpful. That was interesting.
I will go on record and say, I think our city horticulturist may be the hardest working person here in the city of Oakwood.
Every time I drive down Far Hills, he's out there working away. So, okay. Thanks for your report.
I have a quick question.
Oh, whip, okay.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, I actually, this came up right when I was thinking about it. When you mentioned mediation, I used to volunteer down at the Dayton Mediation Center, and this was, this is just like the perfect kind of case that just lends itself to mediation, you know, because people that wanna get along, you know, neighbors. Do we have any mediation services in Oakwood, or where would we send somebody at?
The city does not offer mediation services here, but I, if someone is looking for that, they're certainly welcome to contact me, and I can refer them to a number of different private mediators. I think there may also be some lower-cost mediation services available through our association.
Yeah, we used to, I think it's still free down there, but yeah, I didn't know if there's anything local, so, yeah, very good. Thank you.
And informally, I will say that Jay has certainly mediated more than his share of neighbor disputes here. Probably be willing to talk to anybody who might need assistance in that regard.
Yeah, I was gonna mention that. I would put Jay up against any and every professional mediator around in terms of being able to work out neighborhood issues.
You know, if two neighbors wanna get together and sit down and try to work something out, I, you know, I'd be happy to sit with them here in the conference room at the city. I'm sure Jay would be willing to do that and help them come to some sort of an agreement. 'Cause at the end of the day, we just, like I said, we all have to live together, and it's best that we do so as peacefully as possible.
They wanna get along, so.
And you'd be surprised how heated people can get over some of these kinds of issues.
Oh, yeah, yep.
Very good. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
It's now time for our city manager report.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Just a few quick updates. Tonight, at our last council meeting, we spoke, actually, we had a citizen come to the podium and comment on the prescription drug drop-off, and I mentioned that we were gonna do two things. One, have our annual prescription drug drop-off event at the Public Works Center, and that is scheduled for 8:00 to 11:00 a.m. on Saturday, September 30th, so that's coming up. And in addition to accepting any kind of prescription drugs there, we're also doing a document shred event that same day. So, you can drop off unused medications, and you can bring boxes of documents you want to have disposed properly, shredded up, and there's no cost to that service. But we're also establishing a drop-off container right out here by the dispatch windows. So, when you first walk into the building here at 30 Park, there'll be a box, and it'll be up unless something goes awry by the end of August. And you can, it'll be accessible 24/7, and it'll be much like a heavy-duty mailbox. You open the door, the hatch, and you can drop prescription drugs in there, shut it, and they drop to the bottom of the box, and that'll be emptied daily. Those drugs will be taken downstairs and secured, and then when we have enough of a volume, we'll take it to the proper disposal location. So, it's another convenient way for citizens on an ongoing basis to get rid of that sort of material. The Shorey Road Project is moving along very nicely. Today, the travel lanes were switched again from the two inside lanes to the two outside lanes, and so now, if you're going up and down the entire length of Shorey or in Oakwood, you'll be driving along the curb lanes, either northbound or southbound. And over the next four to six weeks, it'll be that way, and the contractor will be building the center medians. And they're gonna start near the south end and work their way north, and you'll start to really see what the final roadway configuration will look like. As a reminder, this, we have a speed zone throughout that whole 1.1-mile length of Shorey, 25 miles an hour, and it's critically important that our citizens, you know, stick to that speed limit. Our officers are out there every day and enforcing that limit. And again, as I mentioned before, this is primarily for the safety of all the workers that are out there. And I had mentioned before, a few meetings ago, that we stocked up a whole bunch of topsoil from the Lane Stadium Project down at Old River. This is way back last November. This has been at the Irving Soccer Field Parking Lot, and here very soon, as those medians start to get built, why that excellent topsoil will be repurposed and taken from the Irving Field to the medians and put in place, and ultimately, then we'll have nice grass growing in that. And the entire project should be done by the middle to latter part of October, and there'll be, again, two new pedestrian crossings. there'll be, again, two new pedestrian crossings constructed, and again, the bike path on the far north end by the Tudor Salon will be rebuilt and moved about 80 or 90 feet southward, a little bit further away from the Carmel's Restaurant than where it exists today. So very important safety improvement project, and again, it's, it's moving along very nicely. On Ridgeway Road, the work in repairing concrete pavement continues and will continue for another few weeks, and at, at some point over the next month or two, Miami Valley Lighting will come in and replace all of the street lights along Ridgeway, and all the property owners there have been informed of that. And I've also talked at the last couple of meetings about debris placed in the street, and I'm talking primarily cut limbs from trees and that sort of stuff, green waste, and we've reminded our citizens that that should not be placed in the street, that material, but rather just behind the curb for a once-a-month pickup, and I'm happy to report that our kind of stepped-up enforcement program of that, that rule here in Oakwood is, is working very well, and we're very thankful for the, to our citizens for, for complying with that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Any questions for the city management? Hearing none, it'll be time for council comments. Councilmember Epley.
Well, thank you, Mayor, I have no comments tonight.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes, Your Honor, I attended a really neat program at the Historical Society on Sunday. I don't know, the vintage car program, is that what it is? I did not see Norb's truck there, but it's a great, it's a great program, and, and as I was looking at the website, just to, you know, figure out what time, I noticed they have something, really, like every single month, every single month, there's an event, each of which involves an opportunity to tour the house, which is just, just one of our really gems here in the city. So that was great, and congratulations. I think Mark Rizley did a whole bunch of work on that, as he always does, he was out with his broom. And then the Sister City has an event coming up, and I'll know a lot more about that in September, but it looks like we're having more friends from, I think, another twinning event, I believe from Utramont, but I'll, I'll get a lot more information on that, and there, there tends to be a couple, couple of events that are open to, open to everybody, and so we'll learn more in September.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Stevens?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. I'd like to, once again, my annual congratulations to Carol and her staff for a wonderful ice cream social. She always hits us up to scoop some ice cream, so my elbow is sore for two weeks, there's nothing wrong with that. It's worth, it's, it's worth the time to do it, to see all the little kids come up and, you know, say please and thank you, it's amazing, you know, that these kids still do have manners, and these, these young families are phenomenal showing up. It's just, it's tons of young families, it just shows what Oakwood's all about. It's a, Carol did a great job with the weather, it was a perfect day, I mean, it's just, it was a lot of fun. Big turnout, I thought it was a, one of the biggest crowds I've seen in a long time up there, so that, that was a really nice event, well ju, well done by her and her staff. And the only other thing is, in case you haven't seen it, we have another new business coming into Oakwood. The Oakwood Candy Shop is opening up tomorrow, I believe 11, I think I saw, is the, when they're opening up tomorrow?
Ribbon cutting, yes.
Well, no, is it, oh, I don't know the hours, I did not see the hours. Let's just go with, it opens tomorrow, about that, and, you know, another new business for all of our citizens to take advantage of, and hopefully, everybody can stop by and welcome them to the city, so.
Vice Mayor Byington.
No comments this evening.
Thank you, and in addition to that ribbon cutting that we're going to attend tomorrow for the candy store, we have another ribbon cutting in Oakwood on Saturday at 4:00, and that's the Toasty Barker Boutique, which is where former Park Avenue Antiques was, and we're starting to see improvements being made to the old complete pet mart where the Goodwill store is going. They're totally redoing that parking lot, and they're going to redo the sidewalks out front and totally repurpose the front of that as well as the inside of the building. It's going to be a really nice-looking art deco look, so there's progress going on in our business district. So with that, our next meeting is on Monday, September 18th, 2017, this meeting is adjourned.